Let me know when you're, you got the. It's good to go now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening Belcher Town. Welcome to the August 12th, 2025 meeting of your planning board. We've got a rather limited agenda tonight. We've got one ZBA recommendation in here. It's an appeal before the zoning board of appeals. But what they usually do is they ask the planning board and the conservation commission to make recommendations on the actions before they have them. And I think that's scheduled for August 20th, the actual appeal. And then we have an A and R. However, an attorney representing the applicant for the A and R contacted us today. Yesterday and asked that that be pulled from the agenda for tonight because they wanted to change certain things. But I want to come back to it regardless and talk about some of the other issues I saw in there. So you can get back to them and when they submit the A and R, they address those so we don't run into other issues. So we're really best to just hone down to one item plus the minutes, bills additions with the consent of members that don't require any vote. And our town planning report and our members' report. So we'll get into the first item. It's the ZBA recommendation. Could you give us a foundation, Mr. Dogg, of exactly what's going on? So we, and then we'll start from there.
The person appealing the building inspector's decision owns a lot past the end of Muncell Street. He owns contiguous land with plenty of frontage, but out of his three parcels, two of them do not have frontage. And the application was for the farthest one away from the frontage. So the building inspector said, you have no frontage, so I denied your permit, your application. So that's the essence of it.
And, and to be clear, the land that is under contention and debate is strictly lot parcel 214-1.
Correct.
There's a reference to some AKA names of lot 68C and 68B and 68A and all of, all of that. But for the purposes of our discussion, we need to be clear that we are talking about parcel 214-1. And only parcel 214-1.
That's correct.
Okay.
And 214-1, part of it is on the public way of Muncell and part of it isn't, right?
No, no, none of, none of that lot is, none.
And neither the one next to it.
The public part of Muncell ends right here. End, end of accepted way.
I forgot that. I thought this was part of that.
No, no. So this is a parcel, this is a parcel, and this is a parcel. And we're talking only this last parcel that is landlocked by, on two sides, land that was Cowles. It's now Lime Quabin LLC.
Correct.
On one side by Oasis Drive Homeowners Association. And then on the last side by parcel 214-2, also owned by Mr. Berry, but it's a separate piece of, of property.
And even that one only has, well, it has plenty. It has 316 feet of frontage. But the vast majority of that parcel is also.
No, that's actually the third parcel here.
Right.
Yes.
That's the only one that has any frontage.
Correct.
And even that proportionalized, it's, it's mostly off.
Yeah, the subject parcel is over almost 800 feet away from the end of the street.
Right. So we're, we're focused solely on the last 214-1, 3.2 acres, landlocked.
Yep.
So who owns the trace that used to be the road past the end of the discontion?
Oasis Drive Homeowners Association owns the area that used to be a road.
And their ownership came by abandonment of the town road? So it goes to the underlying or previous owner of the property?
Not at all, no. All of that land was owned by William Farmer, who sold it to Sunrise Properties, Peter Goloska. And Mr. Goloska applied for the Oasis Drive subdivision. He concluded as part of the open space, the former, what had been the right of way of the road, which no longer exists. So that is just private property owned by the Oasis Drive Association. North of that, we required a right of way for WD Coles to be able to reach their land. Well, actually, step back. We required the right of way to be over the association land where the passage of the road would have been. So they could reach their land. However, for some reason, that was created on the north side of the association's property. And just goes through wetlands now and a couple of brooks.
The existence of that right of way is irrelevant to.
That's correct.
The discussion in front of us.
Right, because the right of way or easement was granted in favor of the WD Coles and their successors, no one else. And it also, I need to mention, was a creative one.
I'm trying to get clear in my mind how the, the former Muncell.
Yeah.
Got out of the town's ownership and ended up with Oasis.
Because it was.
It was owned by the town at one point.
It was discontinued. So yes, that's when it reverted to the abiding owner.
Okay. So when Mr. Berry is showing in here a deed from Farmer to the town, that's really, that's not a correct assumption. Because the town subsequently abandoned the interest and it went back then to now the owner being Oasis.
Yeah. Oasis owned it, yeah.
So why is he going down this path of trying to prove that it's a town road? It's not a town road.
No, that was decided. That was determined by the court.
So, so time out. I don't know what he's trying to prove.
Yeah.
All I know, all I know is he is appealing a decision made by the, the building inspector. That said, there is no frontage, therefore I'm not going to issue a building permit.
Correct.
And, and in his appeal, he's listed four sections of 145. None of which I, as I read them, none of which support his argument, in my opinion. But, but he's not specifically saying, oh, I do have frontage on Muncell. All he's saying is, I was, I, I am appealing the decision by the building inspector to not issue a building permit.
Right.
But there's also documentation that when the, the foundation permit was issued, it was with the proviso that this did not mean that there would be a building permit forthcoming because there were issues.
Correct.
A year ago.
Well, well.
It might have been better if it got warned at that time.
Yeah.
But.
Well, he, I think he did, the applicant did get warned.
He did get warned?
I think so.
Oh, yeah, there's a disclaimer that doesn't guarantee it.
Correct. That's a, on the, on the.
On, on the.
On the permit itself, the foundational permit, there is a disclaimer that, wherever it is, that this does not guarantee.
It's towards.
The issuance of a, of a, you confirm. I don't know where it is in this packet I've got.
There's, there's a lot of stuff in here.
Yeah.
Second to last page of that collection.
Second to last?
It says, foundation only, Muncell Street, and I lost the permit. Where's the letter?
Well, we could probably start off our, our recommendation back to the ZBA by pointing out that the plot planned that he gave his evidence for where the house was going to be located is an A and R application that came to the planning board was rejected because it was an illusory access.
Yeah.
And was not appealed. So I think that's the first thing we want to have in our documentation is. That the lot he's referring to was never created.
When it was on the agenda for May 13th.
I don't even know how to describe where to go next. It's, he's making an argument that this is a town road. And that argument was subsequently denied by the Mass Appeals Court. When it was, when there was an application for A and Rs previously.
Yeah.
For the same property and it was denied and went through the appeals court system. So you tell them that, that this case is, this matter of whether or not it's a building lot. Except the building lot has already been litigated and decided at 96 Mass Appeal Court 314.
Right.
The Belcher Town case. I, I don't know if it, was anybody else on the board when that happened? Just Mike.
I, I was a non-voting member.
Yeah, the A and R was in 2015. The appeal was.
Seventeen?
About seventeen.
And the decision was nineteen?
Decision was, well, the appeal could, had to have been sooner than that. Anyway, it was, the decision was in 2020. Yeah.
And based on the deeds he showed, he, he purchased the land long, three years after the decision.
Yeah.
I've got the, the case in front of me. It, it started in the Superior Court in March of 2015.
And, and what is that reference?
It's, uh, let's look there. It's 96 Mass Appeal Court 314. So it's volume 96, page 314.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that can be a separate and identified recommendation back to the, the ZBA?
It, the, and that write-up is pretty unambiguous.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, can we just cut to the chase and maybe, I'm gonna suggest that number one, granting this variance would substantially impact or violate the overall intent of zoning regulations, specifically the frontage requirement. If they approve this, then that blows out the, the window of any schedule of uses, frontage requirements for a, a building permit. So I think right up front, we need to say that, that granting this variance would be detrimental to the entire zoning.
Well, that, that could be the conclusion.
It's not a variance. It's an appeal of the building inspectors.
Alright, so, okay. So, so granting this appeal of the denial.
I, I want to identify any facts and then do the conclusion.
Alright. So, so fact one is we're, we're only limited to the piece of property identified as parcel 214-1. Fact two, it is a landlocked piece of property that has no frontage on any existing public way.
Correct.
Fact three, this has been adjudicated in the court?
The matter has been fully adjudicated and, and have the appeal referenced.
96 Mass Appeals Court 314.
They're trying to get a second bite of the apple. Put us through this all over again.
Ironic since that case was based on the offensive use of collateral. How do you pronounce it?
Collateral estoppel.
Estoppel, which essentially was you can't beat the dead horse.
Well, that was because the Farmer property actually had a couple of A and Rs approved on that road. Even though it wasn't an accepted public way, they went ahead and did it anyway. So the Barrys came in and said, well, if you did it for them, you gotta do it for us. And we said, no, we don't. And initially, it, it went into Superior Court and Superior Court agreed with them and said, yeah, you're, you know, you made that decision. You're stuck with it. But we appealed it with our, you know, council, our town council, uh, recommendation saying that, wait a minute, just because you've made a mistake once, doesn't mean that you have, you're bound by that mistake until the sun burns out. Come on now, you know, so, and the judge agreed with that, saying, well, these are new circumstances. Obviously, the first judge made a mistake. So he basically trashed that first decision. Uh, and, and gave us, uh, the court's permission to deny that the A and Rs on this lot, on this road.
Yeah, two, two of the main part, points of that argument were that a current planning board cannot be held by the erroneous to the erroneous decision of a previous board. And the other is that, uh, that that former right of way was now private property. And willingly put into private property the protected open space by the previous owner.
And if I understood correctly, it, the estoppel wouldn't have applied anyway because it wasn't the same, same cast of characters. It wasn't the same piece of land. So even if we were expected to, to continue the mistake of years ago, the basis for, for looking at it with those, that lens was inaccurate.
Can I continue with facts? Okay. So he references in the appeal, he references 145-10. And I would like to quote from 145-10A. In, in, no land shall be used or occupied and no building or structure shall be occupied, used, erected, or the use of buildings or land altered except as in the following schedule of uses. And it goes on from there. 145-11 is the schedule of uses. And attachment two stipulates a minimum frontage for Ag A as being 50 foot for an estate lot, 140 feet for a front, a, a regular lot. Neither of which exist. Two other, separate from that is your delinquent tax.
Well, we want to get that one in there, but I don't know if that's really a finding of fact.
It's not a finding or a fact.
We'll just put it in as an extra after the conclusion.
Okay, I have another extra after conclusion. And if you read his, the deed on 214-1, it says the land as stipulated in appendix A. Appendix A then goes on to describe the property of 214-2. And if you read the deed for 214-2, its appendix A goes on and describes the property for 214-1. So there's a, he's got to straighten out some deeds as well. Just FYI. Are there any other facts that you need to list?
I can't think of any. Can you think of any?
It's not really pertinent to the law, but he's, he's on the checks, the link list.
Yep, we'll add that in. You're out there and go to land. He's shaking his head no. How about on this side? Any other facts that we want to add?
I think, I think you both have covered them pretty comprehensively.
So you could draft a letter for us?
Yeah.
And could you circulate it so we can add any final comments to it before it goes down to the ZBA? And then I think we got till next Wednesday.
Yes.
We can have the, the actual hearing on this thing. And, um.
So those are the facts.
Those are the facts in our recommendations and.
Well, what is our recommendation?
Yeah.
You want that out, lay that out specifically? Even though we've already attacked, it's, it's the basic premise of his application? I, okay, then the, then that's your conclusion. Is that.
We, we, we recommend that they deny the appeal. And that granting this appeal would be detrimental, um, would, would substantially impact or violate the, um, overall intent of the zoning regulations.
It certainly undermined them.
Right. Because I, I certainly don't want a precedent set that, you know?
That people comply for a building permit and shoehorn in, you know, an A and R.
Exactly.
Is what they're trying to do. Cause if he had a good case on the A and R, he would have appealed it. And, uh, but he went to trial court on that basis and fought asylum on it.
Has, has that appeal period passed?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's long ago, yeah.
Yeah, they let it go by. And then they applied for a building permit and, um, you know, the same issues were going to come up. But now they've appealed it. So I don't know how they think that that's going to work better.
Yeah.
Did.
There it is.
Did Berry apply for the original, A, for, I'm sorry, not the original, but did Berry apply for the A and R that was denied earlier? Or was that his father?
His father did.
His father applied for that?
Yeah, and it might have been under the property owner's name, Nunes, myself.
That's what I remember. And so this is a different person.
I think it was Nunes slash Berry on something I, I.
Well, I, I think Berry was the applicant and Nunes was the owner. I don't remember.
And Michael Pill was amicus for Coles?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you saw Michael Pill's name in here?
On the, on the.
Oh, on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The very original. No.
He was one that brought the appeals. Yes.
I'm, I'm referring to the A and R that was before us, trying to get this 50 foot. Most recently, right.
Oh, the most recent one?
No, that was just.
No, that's totally Robert Berry.
That was Robert Berry as well?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought somehow that was his dad. Okay.
Alright, now, um, I was looking through the zoning code. And there's nothing in there about us making a recommendation on an appeal. You know, traditionally, we've been asked to make recommendations on applications for variances and for special permits. But this is appeal.
Well, you've issued opinions on plenty of building inspector appeals.
We have?
Yeah.
I don't, we're doing.
His zoning determination. Maybe not building permits, but certainly his zoning determination.
Well, one of the letters then here was from the ZBA, correct. And asked all town boards to make a recommendation if they felt that, that they needed to. So there was an open invitation that went out to everybody.
Yeah.
So I, I wanted to stamp that out as our, the reason why we're participating in this. We're not participating because somebody else has an appeal before them. And it's not, you know, our, uh, it's not our, our, well, not our business to be sticking our nose into it. We were asked by the zoning board of appeals to make an opinion on this appeal and, uh, make comments.
I don't see a date on this letter from her, but.
The fourth of.
Well, that's the one from Melissa.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm referring to this attachment from Jennifer Sharo. This is the one that says specifically, requesting your board to be specific in citing of the town bylaw or state law that must be met prior to the ZBA's review, et cetera.
Uh, she didn't date it. Well, it is an invitation though.
Yep.
So I'm gonna.
Based on that, that's the authority for making a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to, then they come back and use us as some kind of excuse in a further appeal that ends up in the courts saying that we made comments on their application with no authority to do so. And that's, that's why we're there. Alright, so, uh, that's the basic recommendation then we'll make back to the ZBA. So the motion is to approve that recommendation, subject to the, the town planner circulating the final language on it. So people can, you know, editorialize a little bit the comments that they wanted to make before we send it on to the ZBA. So the motion's made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Elizabeth, the second of the motion, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, I'll move it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You were aye. And Moore is giving us an affirmation. So the record show 500. And we'll draft that letter and send it out. Now. Oh, I don't have a folder on the A and R, do I?
No.
I just have the information that got sent to us preceding the application. And it's a Kathy Jo Champagne Hill. And she's applying for Wilson Hill and Ann Hill, deceased?
Yes.
So both Wilson and Ann are gone?
Uh, I believe Wilson was her husband. I don't know if Ann.
Was the husband of Kathy?
Yes. Wilson O'Gill Jr. was the husband of Kathy Jo Champagne Hill.
Well, what they, they ended up sending us in is a copy of a will.
Yes. And I warned him about that.
Great. I mean, it's a will, but how do I know it's the will of Wilson Hill?
Yeah.
It could be anything, right?
Yeah.
And then.
And that it's the latest will and the, and the one that's probated.
If it's probated at all.
Yeah.
She's, we got a statement here from Beers and Story Funeral Homes. And I'm sorry that Mr. Hill is no longer with us, but that's, doesn't tell me much. A copy of the assessor's card and, uh, and that's it. What am I supposed to do with that? That's, uh, and then she did sign the application as the executor.
Yes.
And she's named in the, in the will as the executor, but I'm assuming that there was some kind of probate. And she was appointed executor, you know, a will nominate somebody to be, and it was actually the personal representative, which is the modern nomenclature. A will nominate somebody, but to be the personal representative or the executor, you gotta file a petition in court and have the court approve it and actually designate you for that role. And then that gives you authority to act on behalf of the estate for any matters that have to be concluded.
Yeah.
Now, um, this is not a matter of joint ownership. Well, we've, we've dealt with these before. We have two parties and they own a piece of property. One of them passes and then the other one comes in here with some kind of action before the board. And all they have is like a death certificate or something saying, well, the property was held in joint title. The other person's gone, so therefore I must own the property exclusively and I have authority to carry for this action. And I don't even like those a lot of times because what if there is a will out there that somehow differentially changes how that property was going to be passed down? But we've taken those in the past. If the title to the property still shows just those, those exclusive people. This just says it, well, I'm, when I die, it's going to go to Kathy Champagne. I don't know if, if that is what actually happened or not. So they've, they've got to straighten this thing out. If there's a probated estate, they've got to show us the designation from the court of the executor of the estate. You know, to establish that she has the authority to execute these papers. And we understand from what the attorney said. And, um, we understand from what the attorney said before the meeting is that, uh, this is a larger piece of property and pieces being cut out of it, that there was some disagreement among the heirs as to where the pins are gonna go. Which means there might be other heirs that have some interest here. And I, I don't know, that's why you probate matters with property in them. Is it goes in front of a judge and the judge makes sure that whoever the executor is, is, is carrying out the disposition of the assets of the estate, including any real property with the intent of the deceased. And I, I don't wanna be sitting here playing probate court on this thing. They, they've gotta tell us what's going on and they've gotta substantiate it with some documentation.
Yeah.
Or, um.
What I asked for, this is what they gave me.
They're gonna run into problems, you know, the, the attorney said in his email that he'd be willing to come in. Fine, God bless him, he can come in.
So his person.
He's gonna get the same questions.
Is personal representative different from executor?
Same thing.
Well, because he, in the will, he says he appoints a spouse. And if she's unable to serve his son, Sean Hill, but the person listed is um, Kathy Champagne Hill.
Right.
As the executor, so it's not what it says in the will.
No, Kathy says.
Oh, wait a minute, said my spouse, Kathy.
I find Kathy.
Yeah, Kathy Jo.
Kathy, and then if she's not available, then to the next person.
Oh, I see, so the spouse is alive.
They used to call them executors and executrixes.
Right.
They, they adopted the model probate code in Massachusetts in twenty thirteen to change that all over to personal representative.
Just so.
That's the new term.
Gender.
For the last ten years. Alright, but a lot of people still have that locked in their mind, that, you know, the term executor, but it's, it's gone by the wayside. And, uh, so it all means the same thing. Uh, but you should advise the attorney before they send, they, they walk back in here with just a new map and the same application, that those are the questions that are gonna be asked. And, um, it's not something that we've really bent on in the past. We wanna have some documentation to put in our file before we start drawing maps and, and filing them in the, in the county registry.
Bless you.
And then have people, you know, have all those, maybe those heirs that we're talking about now come back and say, what, what, what did your people do? You know? She didn't, uh, she wasn't lined up to, to do, you know, whatever we ended up doing. I don't wanna be in that position. And then have been, you know, named as a party in a lawsuit. Okay, did anybody have a, have questions about that one? I mean, it's not before us tonight, uh, but it started out to be before us. I'm gonna move to bills. And the only bill we have is for Dan. Dan went to CPTC training on special permits and variances, even though I'm supposed to know what it's all about. I went, uh, for a refresher and the only thing that really sunk into my skull is, uh, last August is part of the tr- all those changes that came down for the housing act, that special permits were changed from having to be started within two years to having to be started within three years. So they were gonna give them more time, get going, but the advice was that anybody that has two years written in their bylaws is going to have to change their bylaws. The state statute is not gonna automatically override it and bump it up to three.
But only for residential, correct?
For residential. So if we're going to, if we wanna give them more time, that should be next on our wish list is bumping up that, uh, special permit and it's in one forty-five sixty-eight, sixty-eight or sixty-nine, I was playing with it before we started up tonight.
Sixty-nine, sixty-eight is the appeal.
Sixty-nine, it's in, yeah, it's under special permits, this is sixty-nine. We'd have to make a slight change there and we might as well go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't think of how many times we've bumped up into it, not that many, but it's one of the things that they're gonna do. So, um, I went to that training and it cost me thirty-five bucks and I'm asking to be reimbursed.
You got it.
I'll pr- I'll probably be at that ZBA hearing on the twentieth filming it, so I'll let everybody know what happens. Uh, I've got the minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty-five, which was our last meeting. And it's been previously circulated. If I've had a chance to make any changes to it, are there any further edits, deletions, changes that anybody wants to make tonight? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve the minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty-five as written. Well, seconded. And seconded by Mr. Hawthorne, motion made, seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we got a thumbs up from beyond.
And a voice.
Did, 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 did you ever go to that foreclosure at Fifty-Five Main?
No, I didn't.
I didn't either.
I was out of town.
I had a car, it had serviced and I was sitting waiting for it to hand it to me. For, for the others, uh, you know that house on Main Street in the middle of town that was before us once talking about a marijuana operation and then that seemed to have gone away and then it came to us, uh, after that, uh, they were talking about, uh, getting a variance to put housing in it.
Oh, was it where the, um, coffee place?
Where the copy place used to be.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah, collective copies used to be.
That was foreclosed on August fourth by the, um, holders of the mortgage, which was, um, it looks like some kind of private, it wasn't a bank. It looked like it was a, some kind of private venture thing. It was advertised a couple of times in the Sentinel.
Oh, I did not notice that.
If you read the little legals in the back of the Sentinel, I caught it. And they foreclosed it, uh, on site and I was gonna go and I let Michael and, and Doug know, uh, in case they went to go down and see what happened with it. I'm assuming most foreclosures end up going to whoever the lender is.
Yeah.
So, uh, we don't know that. I haven't heard anything about what happened to it, but that the ownership is gonna obviously change over. So maybe there'll be some motion on it in the future and the special permit, it wasn't a variance, it was a special permit, right?
Right.
So if they recorded the special permit, whoever the new owner's gonna be, is gonna be able to pick up on that. Cause it'll run with the title to the property. If they record it.
If they.
And I was thinking, there's an interesting problem, what happens if they get the special permit but didn't record it?
And it doesn't.
It doesn't exist.
Then it doesn't exist. The foreclosure wipes its ability out to be able to file it?
I would think, well, they had a certain amount of time to record it every week.
And that was a while ago, long enough ago that if they didn't record it, it's gone.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, what the, what duration is.
I do, I do remember that, that the reason for, was more space given over to apartments, right? And it was because they were having a terrible time.
They, they can't rent it.
Reporting, uh, supporting it after the copy center moved out. That's too bad.
Uh, good news, Pepper Ridge is paved. Uh, and pretty much all construction work is done and conservation signed off last year. Uh, so it's really just the paperwork stuff, the hazmuts and, um, things like that to get finished.
I don't remember seeing in the paper any of those lots in there selling.
And they haven't sold any. Do you have covenants on all of them?
Well, yeah, but he could have come to us to ask for the covenant to be released if he had a buyer, but I.
They haven't.
They haven't been actively trying to sell that property.
I don't think so, no. It's, we've, we've been sitting on it for over a dozen years and I don't know why.
Okay, but it is going forward as least as far as the, the road is concerned and we might be able to get it into the next town meeting.
That's, that's the goal, so, uh, that's, that's gonna be an achievement. That we can actually get that guy through. Um, Lake Wallace Sensi Trail is, uh, nearly done and waiting for the contractor to get back out and finish the surface and some cleanup and put up the kiosk, um, but.
It's wonderful if you haven't been out on it.
Yeah, and.
It's really wonderful.
If you like bobble links, you can go to the end of the trail over the field and watch them. And, and the tree swallows too. Like, I, ready by now, let's go.
And the mosquitoes.
And the mosquitoes, that's what the swallows call it. Uh, also, Lake Wallace, you, if you've been over there, you've seen the, the pergola that was put up by, uh, the rec department and DPW. Um, and they put in some particular tables, so, uh, it needs a little more work, they probably should have a gravel base or something. Because otherwise you remove the tables out and it won't work and that sort of thing. Um, and for our woods trail on, on the west side of Lake Wallace, uh, normally mass trails would have announced their grant awards in June or July. And right now they have nothing to say and I'm sure it's because it's federal money coming through the apartment transportation.
Nothing, nothing to.
And.
Nothing to give.
So we might not do anything. Um, and, uh, let me see, the, okay, the new, other new state law that involves energy, clean energy citing and permitting. Um, they're starting to make the rounds and so we have a, a new department of energy resources staff person in the area and she wants to meet with me and other interested folks in town to go over the program and ask questions, answer questions and that sort of thing. And we set a meeting for the order of this next week.
Fifteenth?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth at eleven AM, um, I don't know if any of you would be interested in joining that, um.
The nineteenth at eleven AM.
Of this month.
Of, yeah, next week.
Yeah, a week from today.
One or two of you might wanna sit in on that and then, uh.
Are you, you're doing it here?
Yeah, we're doing it, yeah. And then, um, haven't heard back from Steve if he wants to, but, uh, probably Stephanie from Conservation will join us. And, um, yeah, cause it, it, it overrides a lot of zoning, but also overrides, believe it or not, wetlands lots.
Now, I was gonna ask you about that, was it Westfield? What was it, there was a town, oh, just last week, that, um, they have a solar project, it was a south of Hadley. They have a project coming in and it's gonna have batteries on it and they're asking the state
Oh, that's.
prohibit the batteries.
It was Hadley, wasn't it?
It was Hadley, she's right, yep.
Oh, right, yes.
Um, so the, the general proposition has been the state is gonna allow overriding local bylaws with regard to aquifer protection in order to put battery sites in? That's what it, that seemed to be implied.
That's in general sense, but, um, that's why we need to ask questions and learn more.
I, I, I don't know, it made it sound like the question had already been answered.
Yeah.
That the state was, um, considered that to be obstructionism by the towns.
Yeah. Well, they might, so it's something we gotta figure out.
Steve Karabedian would be a good person to have there.
Yeah, that's true. Nice.
Well, they're just, uh, just listening to how that, fighting that fire in Springfield in the salvage yard, they had to use four million gallons of water. And that would have ha- would happen if one of these solar battery fires caught on? They had to dump about four million gallons of water on it in the miller aquifer?
Yeah, that's, I'm gonna put it out. We just have to let it burn.
Alright.
Yeah, that's what the fire department told us, 'cause water won't put them out.
I wonder if you could breathe them instead, get a drink and. Pour it with me, that's a little man, I think, and die soon anyway.
Can, can we get back to the town planners report?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the only other thing I have right now is, uh, Alex's work and I don't know if you'd wanna give us just a quick couple of words on.
Um, I've been working on the dashboard for the new, uh, matrix view of what's going on with the town. So we've been going over old, um, segments of what we've done or had goals of, potential actions of, to go forward in our town progression. So that's been kind of left alone for a long time now. A lot of the ones that I've been going over have been from two thousand eight, so they're almost as old as I am. So I've been entering those into a large matrix view with our other intern. And so that's gonna be made into an interactive dashboard, which we can put onto our community website. So that's been what I've been working on the last few weeks.
Yeah.
Very good. Can, can you say that again? You, you're looking at things that were goals for the community, but have not been addressed?
Yeah, so. Yeah, for the most part, some of them have been completed, but it's only a small portion of the overall, um, so there's three goals for each one. And then under each goal, there's a set of actions, which were something that we could do to improve onto that goal. And so only a few of those actions have actually been completed, so I'm kinda sorting through those.
How many different projects?
Um, I've done six, so like land use, transportation, agriculture, and then the other intern has done about the same number. So there's like twelve or thirteen of these different sections.
The, the reality is it's, it's relatively easy to say this is what we should do. And it's very difficult to then get that done.
Exactly.
And that's, that's what you're pointing out here and this is an excellent way of, of, you know, raising the flag and saying all the good talk hasn't come to fruition yet, so. Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
We should thank the messenger.
Yeah, and Doug.
All set?
Yeah.
Leonard, is there anything you'd like to share with the board?
I do not have anything.
Yorn, up there and go to Leonard, is there anything you'd like to share with the board tonight? He's checking, he said no. And, uh, Michael, I'm fine. Elizabeth?
I'm fine, except that I was gonna use this time to say, if you haven't been on the Lake Wallace extension, you have, it's, it's, it's not huge. You can, half an hour would do it and it, it will make your heart sing, especially when you get to the, the terminus.
Mark, did you have anything you'd like to share?
No, thanks, nothing yet.
All set? Alex, you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Also.
I'm all set also, so it's fifty minutes, not a record, but, uh, a decent amount of time to, to, to discuss before a meeting. With that, I'll take the motion, or I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn. And could I have a second?
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Leonard, motion made, a seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Um, whoops, I'm not supposed to discuss, uh, a motion to adjourn. So I'll move it right to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You're all set, Mary Ann, you can turn it off. I was just, I was just trying to, you know, use up some.